Good evening, Councilmember Doug Young has our prayer and pledge. Mr. Young?
Please join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, June 10th, 2010. I would like to send out anniversary greetings to my wife, forty-one years today. For our anniversary.
What about her husband?
Thank you, she's long suffering.
Mayor, that would be congratulations to you, condolences to the First Lady.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gilli, you're treading on thin ice.
Welcome to the crowd.
All right, you have before you your consent agenda. If there are any questions regarding the consent agenda now would be a good time to bring those up.
Mayor, if there are no questions, I move we approve the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I also want to remind everyone that we will have a kind of a neighborhood community meeting for a Haynes Drainage Plan, or at least what we're presuming to be able to do, on the area between Thompson Lane and Haynes Drive on either side of Memorial, and that will be on June the fifteenth, which is next Tuesday night, between five and seven PM at Irma Siegel Elementary School, which is on Thompson Lane, very near the VA Hospital. So I'd just like to bring that up and let people know that they're invited to attend that, kind of look at that drainage area, which kind of goes from Thompson Lane south to Haynes, and goes along to Jarnet and Haynes Drive on either side of Memorial. We'll be taking a look at that. If you need more information, you can call the mayor's office at eight four nine two six two nine. Councilmembers, you have before you the minutes of the meeting held on May the thirteenth, 2010. If you've had an opportunity to review those minutes, are there any additions or deletions as they have been presented? If not, is there a motion that we accept those minutes as they have been presented?
Move to be approved.
Second.
Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
At this time, we'll consider passage on third and final reading and ordinance amending Chapter thirty-three Waters and Sewers of the Murfreesboro City code, dealing with the minimum monthly water charges and minimum monthly sewer charges.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading and ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter four, Alcoholic Beverages, Section four dash ninety, Chapter thirteen, Food and Food Products, Section thirteen dash one, and Chapter twenty-eight, Streets and Sidewalks, Section twenty-eight dash fourteen. These are all dealing with meal and beverage service on city sidewalks.
Move passage.
Third.
Motion, second.
I've thirded it too, Mayor.
Thirded it, it's done. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
At this time, pursuant to provisions of TCA six fifty-six two oh six and the City Charter, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider the 2010-2011 City of Murfreesboro Tentative Budget. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the May thirtieth, 2010, issue of a local newspaper. What we'll do is if anyone is here wishing to speak regarding our tentative budget as has been presented, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Richard Baines, I live on Pikeville Terrace here in Murfreesboro.
Do you have a street address?
Thirteen nineteen.
Thank you.
I'd like to begin by complimenting the city manager on a good job in this budget preparation. I've had the opportunity to go through at least three quarters of it, and I think he's got things headed in the right direction by introducing a goal-oriented plan, which in a municipal government, it's got to be like herding cats. The mayor and the council also have to set measurable goals for themselves, as well as the city manager and the city employees. To that end, I would like to ask the question of how can the council, in good conscience, approve layoffs while refusing to save over forty thousand dollars a year by moving to local elections from April to November, coincide with state and national elections? The reason it's been given at every election in the past is that it would dilute public awareness of the issues. And my question is, what are the issues? I've been involved in the last two elections, going to the various functions where questions were asked, and the only two issues is district representation and the issue of moving the election from April to November and saving that money. Public opinion supports moving the election date. I don't see where there's any dilution of issues because there are very few issues. And again, if that would save one or two jobs, I say, let's do it. These are very difficult times, and it's time for the council to step up, take leadership, make that move, and use that money probably to save a job, a job and a half, and I think you owe that to the voting public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
Evening.
My name is Bill Dirk, and I live at seventy-one nineteen Hudson Road in beautiful Rockvale, Tennessee. And I'd like to greet you all, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Ms. Lyons, city staff, honored guests, and above all, the citizens of Murfreesboro. My name is Bill Dirk, and I'm firefighter and EMT with the Murfreesboro Fire Department. I'm also honored to be the president of the Murfreesboro Firefighters Association, representing the majority of the career firefighters here in the city, as well as in the U.S. and Canada. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address all of you this evening regarding the city's budget, and in particular, how this budget will impact our city's firefighters. I would like to begin by first commending our fire department's newly-formed Swiftwater Rescue Team and their outstanding performance during the recent flooding events here in the mid-state. I'd also thank Chief Gaines and Deputy Chief Teles for here with us this evening to help me put that together. I want to actually be very specific to point out our gratitude for the newly-formed, so far, team's equipment, which is about to arrive and is in the city's budget, which I assume we'll be approving this evening. I also want to thank the fire department for the equipment purchase, for the new firefighter bailout systems, which are a firefighter self-rescue system, which we use in our RIT activities, which are firefighter rescue. So in the most direst circumstances, our firefighters will be able to descend from a second or third story window or roof and be able to extricate themselves from harm's way, and we're very grateful for the purchase of that equipment. With that being said, I would be remiss not to address the disappointment our members feel regarding the issue of step raises. Although the city has seen fit to propose a seven hundred and fifty one-time addition to our current compensation to offset insurance costs, there is a sense among our membership that this is simply a Band-Aid to cover a longstanding pay inequity. Going all the way back to the well-known Burris and Associates pay study of 2004, it has been clearly noted that the members of the Murfreesboro Fire Department are paid at least seven percent below market average as of 2004. We get the sense that that number may have actually increased somewhat over the years. The 2004 pay study went into great detail regarding firefighter pay, and it's clear that this inequity has never been adequately addressed. Rectifying this disparity is a priority for our membership, and not a day goes by that I am not reminded by our membership. We feel that the city of Murfreesboro is in very sound and robust financial health. The numbers bear this out, in particular, our excellent asset-to-liability ratio of one point nine zero. Also, the fact that the general fund increased by forty percent between fiscal years oh four and oh nine. We contend that Murfreesboro is positioned to rectify our pay inequities in the relatively near future. The thirty-eight million dollars in the general fund balance speak well for our financial circumstances. That in particular makes the thought of laying off fourteen fellow city employees seem truly unjustified. We also contend that changing from a traditional pension system to a 401K arrangement was unnecessary, considering the financial health of our city at this time. Was there a slight downthick recently? Yes, absolutely. Are we likely to overcome that sooner rather than later? We believe that yes, we are, and we believe that that should be reflected in our paychecks. Please bear in mind, not all of our observations regarding compensation are negative in nature. We are very encouraged to see the city broach the possibility of early retirement buyouts. This is an idea many of our members have brought up over the years. We think the city will see a great deal of interest and participation in this potential program. However, only if our base pay is raised to a level that permits our members to retire with dignity and security. Without that movement, our senior members will be compelled to stay on as long as possible in their current positions, simply to survive in retirement. I would like to leave you all with this thought. Part of a fire department's job is to be taken for granted. In fact, I for one take great pride in the fact that my services are taken for granted by those we protect. At the absolute worst moments of your life, you can take for granted that a call to nine one one will bring us to your side. You can take for granted, at the worst moments of your life, the Murfreesboro Fire Department will bring its absolute best to your side. Our best is firefighters, our best is citizens, and our absolute very best is people. That level of commitment and service, however, should not be taken for granted in our paychecks and compensation. If called upon, we will lay our lives down for you and your loved ones. Our brothers and sisters in the police department will do the same. That commitment should be clearly reflected in our paychecks. We look forward to working with you to make that a reality in the very near future. We thank you all for your support, we wish you a safe summer season. We invite you all to please come visit us at the firehouses, and please bring your children.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Don't be shy. Anyone else at all? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider any other changes to the City of Murfreesboro 2010-2011 tentative budget. Mr. Lyons?
Yes, sir, Mayor Bragg, in your packet this evening, we have several documents. We tried to capture the comments that we've received from you during the budget review sessions. They're outlined on my memorandum of June the eighth. This is a memorandum of explanation. I would also point out to you, you have a copy of a document that says revised figures for council meetings. It's an email from Ms. Tucker to myself that incorporates those changes, should you choose to accept those, to the overall budget. We wanted to give you a running total of how it changed, the various budget changes. Very quickly, this would, the first change with the outside agencies for the rescue squad would reallocate ten thousand dollars from the rescue squad to the fire department training line item. Secondly, the part-time security position was proposed to be, the funding for that position be eliminated from the budget, and I am now recommending that we put that back in due to some personnel changes we've had. The deletion of the assistant to the city manager position, the funding of the one-time employee bonus, and I've laid out the manner in which that would be handled, the details of the bonus. Additionally, I might want to stop right there and see if there are any questions on any of those items.
Everyone has that budget changes sheet in front of them, possibly. Does everyone get a copy of that? Are there any questions so far? And I think in regard to the one-time payment to our employees, obviously you'll see that in several different sections because of where the money has to go, where our employees are located, and generally speaking, that amount after taxes possibly is going to pay certain number of employees, a few extra dollars. Others will find it probably reimburses what their insurance costs will go up over the eleven months of the next fiscal year, or eleven of the twelve months, because one month will be at the old rate. Are there any questions regarding what Mr. Lyons has already proposed as changes based on what he's heard from us? If not, you may proceed.
Yes, sir. The positions that would be eliminated during last week's council meeting, as you know, the proposed budget that you received last month included severance pay of two months' pay. Last week, you talked about wanting to increase that to three months, so we have plugged those figures into the spreadsheets. The cost for that additional month of severance pay would be thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Now, one of the things we have also put in your packet, and it is attached to that same document, it is a June eighth memorandum from me entitled Reduction in Force. We are asking to waive some of our typical procedures for filling positions. Mayor, members of council, there are four positions in the Water and Sewer Department that are laborer positions. Additionally, we will have an administrative support specialist in the legal department that will not be vacated until September, but given the fact that we're in a situation where we're trying to right-size, we're asking that we waive those standard procedures with the hopes that some of the employees who would be in the pool of potential layoffs might be transferred to Water and Sewer and the legal department. We staff met with Solid Waste today to talk about the positions in Water and Sewer with the hopes that the positions in Solid Waste might move over to Water and Sewer, and therefore we'd avoid a position, someone who would be out of employment with the city of Murfreesboro. So we're trying to cut down in size the number of positions that this would impact. I might stop there and see if there are any questions.
Any questions regarding that?
Mr. Lyons, if that works out the way that you're hoping that it will, that actually has a net effect of, coming the other part-time proposal that you have in here, of going from fourteen layoffs down to eight, is that correct? Four in Water and Sewer, the one level was five, and then the other part-time that's addressed, that's six of the fourteen, which would be placed under your...
Well, it actually will end up being a net total of five, because one of the part-time positions in the judicial department was not filled, it was vacant, so it did not impact an individual.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many employees have in the city has left, whether it's sick, or terminated, or retired in this last fiscal year?
Well, we went back and looked over the last two budget years, including the budget year that we're in, so almost, you know, two full years, and we are down forty-eight positions from levels that council had authorized us to staff versus employees who are actually on the job today. We've done that through attrition and not filling positions, again, all part of our belt tightening. We are now down forty-eight positions.
So of those forty-eight, do you know approximately how many of those have been replaced, and if they have been replaced, how many have been replaced within the city?
That's what I'm saying, it's a net forty-eight.
Forty-eight, okay. So, okay. Okay, if there's absolutely no way, after we've looked at all the revenue and all the scenarios, I'd like to see a couple of things. I'd like to see us put a freeze on hiring anyone off the street, because we are putting some employees on the streets, I'd like to see us put a freeze on that. And with the openings that we do have, and you have addressed some of those, I would like to see us move people around within the city to keep from disrupting the lives of employees and their families as much as possible. I'd like to see us also, like we promised, if the revenue comes in in February, after Christmas, that we do keep our promise to the city employees and give the raises that we have been talking about. If there's absolutely no way that we can keep all of them, I personally would settle for half a loaf, it's better than no loaf at all. That's how I look at it. But I'd like us to look at all avenues, all avenues, to try to keep, seems like we are dwindling it down from fourteen now to eight, if we can look in every crack and cravvis we have, to keep all fourteen on. I really like us to seriously look at that, very seriously. I don't know, I'm learning about the budget, and I've read correspondence that we got recently, and maybe I have misinterpreted, but in looking at the budget, safer instance if someone did not meet budget, they had money left over, you know, maybe we can look at some of that revenue, I know it's, we're going to leave that open for some of the projects, I think, if I interpreted that right correctly, but, you know, I'm just trying to find peonies or anything to keep all fourteen, because it seems like we're doing a good job, we're gradually keeping, so if we can keep the remaining eight, I'd like to see us look real deep in this budget. Because we're not here again laying off fourteen, we're looking at the livelihood of these people, that's their families too, and I know it's a business, I realize that, but if we're a family, we talk about how we're a family in the city, let's pull it together and let's see if we can keep all fourteen.
Mr. Lyons, you have had a hiring freeze in place for some number of months already.
With the exception of positions in Police and Fire, you know, the mayor and council have established that public safety was a priority, so when positions have come open in Police and Fire, we have filled those positions. Ms. Harris had indicated, we've had other positions in the city where we have transferred employees from one department to the other. Our standard practice in the past might have been to advertise in the newspaper, take applications, but we chose not to do that. We knew that things were tight, so we limited our pool of applicants to existing city employees, and we would move from one department to the next, you know, we had a position in the senior center.
That's right.
That was integral to that department.
Aye.
Ms. Burt had wanted to advertise, I said, we're going to look internally, she found an employee in city court who has moved over to the senior center, is doing a fantastic job. I think we then took an employee from the police department and moved him to judicial. We've done several rounds of this, again, trying to figure out ways that we could, you know, shorten up the city staff without having to be in a layoff position. At this point, we've kind of exhausted those, now with the budget, we've got several positions in the Water and Sewer Department, we think can provide an opportunity to transfer some of those from Solid Waste, where we're trying to right-size, to the Water and Sewer Department, where they still have a need.
Mr. Washington?
Yeah, and I don't want the public to misunderstand this, you know, and Ms. Gales correct, nobody wants to see any layoffs, and if we could give real nice raises, it would be fine, but as long as you're taking money out of fund balance to balance your budget, and we're talking about two or three million dollars for the last three years, the public needs to understand that, that as long as you're doing that, it's almost like going out and getting a loan, you know, you know, you go to fund balance and get three, four million dollars to balance your budget, and this year, we're going three point seven to do it, and you're still laying off.
Last year was four million.
It was, I wouldn't say that, we're now three point seven this year, and as long as you're doing that, if you understand the budget and understands how business operates, and we still have layoffs, so, you know, keep it in perspective.
Mr. Gilli?
Mr. Lyons, one other thing that I might perhaps suggest we look into, just sort of thinking a little bit outside the box, I know that the MED is a separate, its own rate paying and revenue generating entity, but just like where you were able to look at Water and Sewer and see if there were openings they might have that our employees that are being laid off could fit the bill for, perhaps we could check with MED and see as they look for labors and employees, ask them if they could to look very seriously and give some potential deference to good, hard-working city employees that need new places to work.
Yes, sir, Mr. Godwin, it's an excellent idea, you know, we'd, I'd also planned on calling Metro Public Works, Metro Planning, Metro Building and Codes realizing that, you know, should the layoffs occur, we have employees with skill sets that might be very beneficial to Metro, you know, they're dealing with the cleanup, so employees who are knowledgeable about codes, planning, construction, and public works, you know, may have an opportunity there, so we do want to think out of the box and see what we can do to help folks land on their feet.
If there are other local government-related agencies that we can call upon to, for assistance in that regard, I think it would probably be a very good thing.
Yes, sir.
Question. If we cannot save all the fourteen employees, are we still thinking about hiring this outside consulting firm?
Are you speaking to the firm to provide assistance to the employees on the, who are, positions are eliminated?
I think last week, we talked about hiring a consulting firm for these employees for seven thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we still thinking about that?
Absolutely.
I personally would like to see a freeze put on that. I would like to see us, if we can, utilize our human resource department that we already have in place with the city, or some other sources. If we are laying off people, I personally would not like to see us spend seven thousand dollars hiring a consulting firm to consult these employees. I'd like to see that come from our human resource department.
One thing you were asking for was an additional month's salaries for each of these folks, and I understand that, but I think outplacement services would be equally important to them. I think that would show at least some concern on our part, and compared to the thirty-nine thousand dollars to allow for an additional month, I think seventy-five hundred dollars is, or whatever it would cost, if we have fewer employees, it won't be that much money, so I think we ought to try to do the best we can do with someone who has experience in doing this, and I know that we're consultants sometimes, sounds bad, but by the same token, you're not paying an employee when you hire a consultant, you're only paying them for a specific task, and then you're not employing them anymore, so that's why I think that's probably a service that we need to look at.
We don't have anyone in our human resource department that can consult these individuals?
Yeah, Ms. Harris, we have a very talented human resources department, there's no doubt about that, but I think the recommendation to provide the outplacement services is to go the extra mile to help the employees, number one, deal with the fact that their position had been eliminated, and help them locate their next job. They're going to give them job search recommendations, they're going to help them in resume and job application preparation, they're going to provide them some skills and some networking opportunities that, this is what they specialize in, you know, the firm that we've spoken to, this is exactly what they do, this is their forte, and we think it will be a great benefit to the employees. Our human resources director's here, if you had, you know, further questions about that, I know he's experienced, had some experience with the firm and felt that it was outstanding for helping the employees who were impacted by a potential layoff to find a new position, which is what we all want to see as quickly as they possibly can, so we think these services are something that would be very beneficial to those employees.
Mr. Gilli?
Thank you, Mayor. Perhaps a happy medium between the cantor-vailing arguments on the pros and cons of that. Mr. Lyons, would it be possible that once we make a determination who these specific individuals are, to consult with them and see if they would utilize, to the extent that it would be of value to us to have that service, if they are, great, but if you go to these folks and they say, we're not going to use this service, you're wasting the city's money by providing this, we don't need to use the money for it, is that something we can do?
I think so. If I could, just maybe have Mr. Godwin quickly speak to those services and how they, you know, he's found them helpful, because I think there's some things that he's seen that maybe we're not familiar with.
And like I said, if the employees feel they would really benefit from that, that's great, on the other hand, if they wouldn't, that average does come out to about... great, on the other hand, if they wouldn't, that average does come out to about five-hundred-and-fifty bucks a person, is that correct, if you do the math on that, that if it's, if it's not gonna be a financial benefit or an assistance, I seen this-
We may be able to do it for less than seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
The reason why I brought that up, I've had several employees to call me who think they may be in the pool of people, of this fourteen people, and they said, "If we're gonna spend that kind of money, you know, I don't understand if we can come up with seventy-five or seven thousand dollars to consult us and laying us off, it's just, it doesn't make sense." In fact, it's more aggravating to the employees, because that's money they feel like that we could keep in the city to possibly keep somebody else on.
Mr. Godwin?
Rag members of the city council, I have researched some options, and having been a person who was impacted by a reduction in force in the private sector last year, I can speak to that experience, as having been very beneficial in job search, it's a very difficult job market, to the council's point about spending dollars wisely in the midst of all of this, we did some research on what may be best suited for these employees, and that would typically be available in, in the context of having a workshop during the workday, such that the employees could benefit from collaborating with each other, and there are several, of course, companies who would provide this service, we think we found an ideal one who would provide a service for approximately twenty-five hundred dollars total.
Mr. McFarlane? I'm gonna make the comment that, you know, I think we're, we're looking at three months severance, and I would think that the employees that, that are gonna be, you know, in this, this reduction, that if that staff can get together and work with them and work on their resume, work on their networking, what the goal would be is for them to be employed at the end of three months, so I think that, you know, if, if the city has to spend twenty-five hundred dollars to help these eight individuals get a job, hopefully in this three-month time period, I would think that that would be more beneficial to the employee than the severance package would be, because you're giving them and helping them find a place of employment, and not them waiting for their three-month severance package to run out, you're helping them find, find employment, so I mean, I would think that that would be beneficial to, to a person who's being, you know, being laid off.
You feel confident you've got it down from seventy-five hundred down to twenty-five hundred now?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Godwin.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons, do you have other changes that you would like to go through as we're considering?
Well, if, so we can maybe keep this, similar thoughts together, if you would look at my June eighth memo that says reduction in force, in order for us to make those transfers, I would ask for your approval of the, the recommendation here, there's four steps there to authorize the application selection process to start prior to the final adoption of the budget, to temporarily suspend the handbook section that authorizes internal advertisements, allowing the transfer process to be completed before any employees are selected for the reduction in force, even though this may delay the notification process and related deadlines, and four, deals with the, the severance package, should something not work out.
That's on page two of your June eighth-
Yes, sir.
-that's what you're talking about under the severance package, one-time employee bonus, and then the severance package.
It's the June eighth memorandum, mayor, that the subject is reduction in force, it's at the back of the-
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
I got that one, mayor, the top one, right there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
In order for us to have the ability to make these transfers, these would be the sections that we would need some flexibility on.
All right, so you have these recommendations of the city manager, are there questions regarding these recommendations? And I'm thinking that the city manager is asking for a vote to approve these steps at this meeting. If there are no questions, is there a motion to authorize these changes for the purposes of this reduction in workforce?
Again, Mr. Lyons, with those steps, that allows you the flexibility to, as you talked about with the positions of the water and sewer and so forth, to help get those employees placed.
Before, before any potential layoff would occur-
Before the layoff, and go ahead and you try to keep people working without interrupting their families' livelihoods and so forth.
Correct.
Go ahead.
And I was gonna say, we have a large employee, employee base, you know, we have almost eight hundred employees, that's not counting water and sewer, that's not counting Murfreesboro Electric Department, so, you know, we have, we've got a huge base, and my thought would be, as we have that many employees, there are things that happen all the time, where we are gonna have positions that will, you know, come open, or people have other life choices if they want to do something else, so as those situations occur, we will still have this base and pool of people that we can automatically look at, even if it is in that three-month time period that they're drawing severance, that we still have that, that base, as if something happens, a position comes open, someone leaves, that we can pull from that group first choice, and see if we can, can move some people around.
With that, mayor, I would move to approve the recommendation.
All right, you have a motion, second, any questions regarding this recommendation by the city manager, any questions?
So how many employees are we laying off right now?
There would be four labor positions in water and sewer, and administrative support specialists in the legal department.
That's, that would really fill.
Yeah.
But how many total are you laying off, is it ten?
Ten full-time, three part-time.
Three part-time.
But you're saying if we're able to fill these positions with this protocol that you've outlined for us, then that gets that net down to-
Yes, sir. If we are able to take four of the, the positions and fill the labor position in water and sewer, the, the full-time would go from ten to six.
Okay. Find two and delete one position.
So this is not talking about the freezing of any-
We're not hiring anybody now anyway, other than police and fire, if you freeze, you'll freeze-
No, I'm talking about freezing the outsourced agency.
We haven't, no one's brought that up, these recommendations are regarding this reduction, which does, I don't believe there's an indication there about outsourcing, is it? Allows to offer any employee transfer, no, there's nothing about the outsourcing in this motion.
If we choose to do that, we would need to do that in a separate motion, Ms. McGinnan, this, this is just the specific proposal that's been provided to us about the, the streamlining ability to-
And there may be a wastewater plant operator too, that may open up another opportunity for other staff members, so we're trying to, as we've seen positions that would be in, in the budget that would be vacant, to try to eliminate the number of employees laid off.
And, and our total employee count, was it seven seventy-two?
Seven seventy-one, I believe.
Seven seventy-one, so, and, and we're looking at eight, so we're one-point-four percent.
Not in that.
I, I don't, I guess it's with the number-
It's in this package. You have this package, and that's the front page, and then turn back to the, to the back of it, the last two pages, have this particular recommendation on it. Kind of like your computer screen, they all look alike till you figure out what they said. With this packet right here-
Mm-hmm. I see that one.
And the recommendation we have is to approve these four things, there's three on one page and one on the following page.
Okay, this is not what I'm talking about, okay, that's fine.
All right, you have a motion and a second, are there any further questions regarding this motion? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye. All right, we've been through some of those recommended changes, do you have additional ones we need to go through to finish?
Yes, sir, there's just a few housekeeping items, now I'm back on my memorandum, also of June eighth, that's, the subject line is proposed budget, I'm on page two, there is a minor math error, rounding error on the VA golf course, and then also a-
It's the same, but it's June eighth.
You're on the June eighth, the smaller type.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. There was a change on at the bottom of page two, there was a correction to part-time employee pay in the amount of seven hundred and twenty dollars, and the correction of a fifty-six dollar error on the VA golf course, additionally, the, there was an airport grant for the airport layout plan, that project wasn't going to get done this year, it's federally funded for the most part, so we're gonna pick that project up out of this year's budget and move it into next year's budget, and the change that you see will increase the grant revenue, increase revenue by seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, and increase expenditures by a total of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Mayor, that would be, I believe Ms. Wright said there was one other change on the revised figure sheet, did you not have one more thing? Okay, all right, those are the changes that we have, mayor.
All right, these are the changes that the city manager has recommended, are there any changes from council members individually?
Mayor, should you get to the point where you would want to make a motion on any of the figures, please refer to this memorandum that's from Ms. Wright to myself, those are the update, updated figures from what was in your packet, the general fund changed by one dollar?
Yes, it's this one.
And it's listed out by fund, so we want to approve it by this listing.
All right.
It's the one you're talking about in spreadsheet form as opposed to memorandum form?
Yes, sir, this would be the document that, everything that I just discussed is reflected in this, this document.
All right, any changes from the council, you have these recommendations from the city manager. So should we approve these budget changes as presented?
If that's your intent, yes.
Ms. McGinnan, we would do that, and then vote on the, then when we're ready to vote on the proposed budget, that would take into account already these proposed changes, is the order that we need to do this in.
Yes, sir.
And I believe the ordinance on the appropriations ordinance would, would take these incorporated into the proposed budget.
All right.
And that would be down at number nine. All right, so you have these recommendations, is there a motion that we accept these budget changes as recommended by the city manager?
Some of them.
You have a motion and a second, are there any questions regarding the motion? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider adopting a certified tax rate of one-point-two-seven-oh-three dollars.
Mayor, before we, we get to that, let me ask Mr. Lyons one question, the suggestion that we have mentioned regarding the, the outside agency, is that a problem, Mr. Lyons, to consult with the employees that would benefit from that and, and let us know their level of desire to utilize that before those funds are expended?
Yes, we'd be, what we want to do is provide a level of training and support that is gonna most benefit them, so as the final list of employees would be developed, the human resource department can sit down with them and make sure that what we're planning to share with them is going to be on target, we've had some conversations with the consultant making sure that we're reaching the right level, and we would be glad to do so.
To make sure that we're giving the benefit that, that these employees want and desire and would utilize.
That is the goal, yes, sir.
Thank you.
It'll also be during their workday with the city.
How many readings do we have on the budget before it's passed?
Three.
Three. First reading's gonna be tonight, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I believe we have received from the county's assessor's office the fact that our certified tax rate is supposed to be one dollar point-two-seven-oh-three cents, and you have a recommendation to adopt this certified tax rate, which in effect means with the prices increasing, that we have to decrease the tax rate, and so you have before you a, an ordinance on first reading to adopt this certified tax rate.
Does that say by the state?
Yes.
And we were last year at a dollar forty, it's one of the- Dollar forty-one, basically, so we're down fourteen cents from thirteen-point-seven or, yeah.
And when I began on the council in nineteen ninety-eight, the rate was a dollar and ninety cents in nineteen ninety-eight.
All right, is there a motion, we adopt the certified tax rate?
So moved.
Second, motion and second, any questions, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye, at this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance the tax rate ordinance.
Oof, pass it.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye, at this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance the appropriations ordinance, which does include the changes that the city manager had recommended to us. Is there a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion and second on the appropriations ordinance, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Brad?
Aye, at this time, we will have a consider amending the twenty-ten, twenty-eleven water and sewer department budget. Is there some question regarding it, Mr. Kershner?
Basically, that amendment is to amend the budget to include the water and sewer department in the seven hundred and fifty-dollar bonus and related charges, and it would be allocated to the various labor accounts.
And that would come out of the water and sewer department's budget.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, just a couple of questions about Mr. Kershner's memo to us, Mr. Kershner, we'll be taking this money from the reserves of the water and sewer budget, is that correct?
No, we're taking it, the, when the city refunded the nineteen ninety-six TML loan, it revised the schedule for the debt service on that, it reduced our, next year's payment from five hundred thousand to about three hundred thousand, in the memo, it, it gives that reduction, and we'll take that from, that, netted out from that amount, and then what's remaining would be placed in future reserve for debt service. Next year, since that's a one-time bonus, that money would be available for future debt service in the next year's budget.
I guess what I'm having the problem with is, is, it may just be the phraseology of it, if you look at the next and the last paragraph of referring it as reserve, future debt, you're not saying we're earmarking borrowing to pay for this.
No, no, it's a line item that we have for reserving for future loans that we're gonna have for that debt service.
So you're saying this is money that after we pay it this one year, will be able to be utilized for those debt payments-
Yes.
-next year, not that we're earmarking potential borrowing to fund the bonus?
Correct, correct, it's, it's basically that, that the, the, we take the expenses for the bonus from the savings by reducing the debt service payment next year, the balance of that would be put into that reserve account that balances the budget again, and would be available next year or in future years when we have additional debt service payments.
To utilize the service debt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons- Mr. Lyons, and I think that's something because of the different funds between the city, employees, and also Water and Sewer, what, this will bring up the $750 bonus globally. That number is now going to be eight, is it 800-something thousand, is that right? If you look at that, if you look at that globally?
Correct.
That's just something I think, you know, when we talk about 771 is our employee number, that does not include the 134, 139 employees in Water and Sewer and stormwater management. That doesn't include M.E.D., that's just Water and Sewer, so if we take M.E.D. on top of that, but that's a different fund. So we're really in the $860,000 range as opposed.
We don't generally consider others than general fund, but we don't, utilities are ratepayer funded. I mean, he's got to raise his own money?
Sure.
Not tax money?
No.
But I think it's kind of an apples orange to put the comparison there.
But it's costing, I guess my point is whether it be through ratepayer services or general fund money, it's costing someone 800 and some odd thousand dollars, whether it be through raising rates or we're doing it through general fund money. So, yeah.
All right, then, is there a recommendation, Mr. Kirchner, that you amend regarding this budgeted item? You recommend it?
My recommendation is in the memo presented.
Has the Water and Sewer Board met on this?
No, sir. They, the memo is to the board, and I asked them if they had any objection to let me know, and I, and they haven't, haven't had any negative response.
I understand it was last minute. Mr. Gilli, as a member of the Water and Sewer Board, are you comfortable with this recommendation?
I am, and I think that, of course, I haven't spoken to the rest of the board, but I think, I don't foresee there being any issue that the remainder of the board, I would be very shocked if the remainder of the board had an objection to this.
All right, then, is there a motion to amend?
Some move, second.
Have a motion in second to amend the Water and Sewer Department budget as recommended. Any questions regarding that motion? If not, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department as amended for fiscal year 2010-2011.
Some move. Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And we have a stormwater utility management fund. Is that amended under the same Water and Sewer?
Same memo, there would be a-
So there would be an amendment to it?
It's in the memo with Water and Sewer also. It's just, the five employees that are in the stormwater fund would come from that fund, and the funds would be taken from a contingency.
All right, so we need an amendment to do that also?
Yes.
All right. You have recommended then an amendment to the stormwater utility management fund, which is outlined in Mr. Kirchner's recommendation to you.
Some move, second.
A motion in second to amend the stormwater utility management fund. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Now we'll consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the stormwater utility management fund for fiscal year 2010-2011.
And this would be as amended at this point?
As amended.
Yes.
Thank you.
Some move, second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution approving the budget of the Evergreen Cemetery for the fiscal year 2010-2011.
Move this adoption. Second.
Motion in second. Is there a question regarding the motion? If not, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you. I believe that completes our discussions regarding the city's budget, which has now been approved on first reading and the other budgets as noted. Any questions or comments at this time before we go on to the recommendations of the Planning Commission?
I have a question.
Ms. Harris?
Okay, we said our budget was going to be three readings, right?
Yes.
And we are saying the outsourced agency, we approved that also tonight? I'm trying to get a understanding.
I believe that amount was included in the budget, yes.
But Mr. Lyons is going to let us know if-
It will not be the full amount.
We won't be spending that money until we know that the employees will actually utilize, would want to have that and utilize that.
Is that correct? The $2,500 is what Mr. Godwin believes the services are going to cost. Now, remember, you know, the process of identifying employees, letting them know, and bringing the training in is all going to happen over the next probably two and a half weeks. So, you know, our goal would be to bring in someone to help the employees, you know, transition toward their next employment before June the 30th. So I do not know what the timetable is going to be for when we identify the employees. It might be somewhere between, you know, five to 10, and when the council might meet. I guess my point is, is time is going to be short, and we're trying to move quickly and be prepared on the front end.
Maybe I'm totally confused, and I apologize for that. I know when I started out, I suggested that we put a freeze on any hiring, and then we started discussing this. I guess I was just totally confused, but since we're going to have more than two readings because my next vote will be not approving the budget, because I did not understand it that way. And I'm not changing my vote because we've already voted, and I don't think I can, but if I, if I can change my vote, I'm voting against the budget.
Mr. Lyons, I have a quick question for you.
Mr. McFarland, this, before we get there, let's- Ask Ms. McGinnon whether Ms. Harris can change her vote.
Not at this time unless there was a, there was a motion to reconsider, and a majority of council voted to reconsider, and another vote was taken.
All right. We'll ask you to change your vote on the next two times, if in fact that's what you wish to do. And if you wish to make any post-changes to the budget at that time, I think they would be considered minor, but that's up to Ms. McGinnon's opinion, depending on what the motion you made was, if that's acceptable to the council, is that all right? Mr. McFarland?
Fund balance, we're looking at 3.7 on million, just to make, I want to make sure that I'm right on that.
Correct.
And then this past year, we had budgeted 3 million, some odd, $4 million. But we had cut enough in spending that we did not dip into fund balance there as much as we expected. Is that correct?
Possibly. We will not know that until we complete an audit of the city's accounts, which is, generally takes, what, several months?
I fully expect that the expenditure totals we bring you at the end of the year for the general fund will be significantly less than what we had budgeted. We tightened our belt and held things back. You know, the problem has been on the revenue side, and, you know, the sales tax is projected to be off between a million two and a million five over the year, and that's where we may need to use some of the fund balance.
I just wanted to make the statement that you took the helms of the city in the worst budget year that I have set on the council, and consistently over the past two years, we have cut and cut and cut to the point that we can't cut anymore, and now it's a revenue issue, it's not an expenditure issue. So when you look at the fund balance spending that we've had over the last couple of years, this year with a 3.7 million, we have cut just about all that we can cut, so we are expecting to spend that money next year, whereas this past year, we were able to cut back all we possibly could. So I just wanted to say to all the staff and all the employees who work so hard for us every day, that they have done a fantastic job with the resources that we have had available to work with, and from talking to the employees, expect no less that they will continue to work hard this next year, and we, as you have relayed to us, appreciate the work that they do.
Agreed.
I'd like to also commend you. I think you've done a tremendous job here again, coming in new. I came in at the worst time. And that's budget time. If we change anything on this council, I'd like to see the city election change, number one, to save us $60,000, but number two, a new employee coming in and totally lost on the budget, I don't think it's fair to throw the person in. On the other hand, other hand, I think it's a great position for a new person to come in, so they can really see how the city is run. And you made a good point, Mr. McFarland, about we cut all we can cut, and that's why I said this outsourced agency, you know, I'm an employee that's being laid off, and I'm going to be sitting and talking to a consultant that we're paying $2,500 to, and I'm sitting here with no job. I'm just kind of finding that hard to see.
All right. At this time, we'll consider the recommendations the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to consider rezoning approximately 4.4 acres OGR along Greenland Drive and North University Street, Area 4, and annexation zoning CH approximately 12.92 acres located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway. Ms. Aylott, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During its regular meeting on June 2nd of 2010, the Murfreesboro Plan Commission considered and recommended approval of the following matters that will need to be scheduled for public hearings. The first is a zone change request for approximately 4.4 acres from CMR to OGR located along Greenland Drive and North University Street. The second is an annexation request to annex approximately 12.92 acres located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway. And the third item is a zone change request for the same property to be zoned to commercial highway simultaneously with this annexation. These did not demand a whole lot of, or enjoy a whole lot of public participation at the Plan Commission level, so I expect that there will be, it will be easy to handle one night. There were a couple of people who spoke, but generally it was favorable to the requests.
Ms. McGinnon, do you have a suggested date?
I do, Mayor, July 27.
I will not be here. You'll not be here. Let's try another day, shall we?
So, Mayor, the thought was you were going to be absent on the 15th. If you're going to be here, we could do it at that time.
The 15th? I don't. We can do it the 15th if that's for the council's wishes. Is there a motion that we have this public hearing on June 15?
Some move.
July.
I mean, July 15th, thank you. All right, July 15th. Motion in second?
On July 15.
July 15th. Do we get a second? Second?
Second.
All right, a motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Aylott. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer with regards to a final change order to the contract with Genco Construction for improvements to Florence Road. Mr. Kirchner, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of the city council. I do have for you tonight, for your review, is the final change order to the contract with Genco Construction for improvements to Florence Road. The change order is intended to revise the project contract to reflect actual work and quantities used during construction. This will increase the final contract price by $908,290.43 to a total of $9,593,359.33, and adds 521 calendar days to the, to the project. I might mention, the city's portion of this change order, since this is a joint project with Rutherford County, is $406,502.50. Staff along with our consultant, SEC, recommends approval of the final change order with the final payment from the, from the TML loan. We've, we've recently completed our improvements to Florence Road from near Broad Street to Mansum Pike. We've included a, a site map for your, for your information. The construction project has, has transformed a, really a substandard county road with multiple deficient curves and problematic intersections to a modern street that meets or exceeds our current standards. The intersection of Old Nashville Highway was realigned and signalized, greatly reducing accidents which had occurred there on a regular basis. We've also addressed a flooding issue where a section of the road regularly stood underwater near the CSX Railroad. Also added sidewalks for the entire length of the project on both sides, which will be able to serve the multiple subdivisions which have been developed along the corridor. All these features are significant due to the fact that this is currently the major north-south connector for, for this section of town. All in all, while these improvements were, were all necessary to, to Florence Road, the, the project proved to be as difficult of a road construction project as the, as the city has undertaken. I've included in your information a couple of tables, which kind of gives a history of the change orders that's occurred on the project. As indicated in the, in the tables, the costs associated with the various types of work are shared by four different groups, the city of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, and the Consolidated Utility District. I will note that of, of the overall, change order of the overall increase in the prices, a significant portion of that, around 1.3 million, was, was unexpected costs due, or to relocate CUD's water line, which for the most part were located in, in private easements, thus making it our responsibility. We note that, that CUD is also requesting an additional $30,000 in reimbursements for, for easements that they, they purchased for the project. We've provided a detailed breakdown of, of overages and places we went under on the job. In general, the increase in the contract can be attributed to four major factors. Utility relocations primarily due to the additional replacement of CUD's water line, which was not accounted in, in their consultants, which James Haley and Associates' original design. Traffic control, as I mentioned, this was the main north-south connector for, for this section of town. Additional pavement was, had to be used at several locations to, in order to maintain traffic flow through the area. We also had a lot of new development in the area, which, which added concrete for driveways, asphalt for new residential streets, and some additional drainage. And we also, as we have on several of our, of our last, last few projects, we had a And we also, as we have on several of our last few projects, we had a bituminous adjustment, which is basically a fluctuation of pricing in the petroleum industry, which significantly impacted the index, which caused an overall increase in the unit cost for the asphalt. As I mentioned, the total amount of this particular change order is 908,290 dollars and 43 cents, and the city's responsibility for that portion is 406,502 dollars and 50 cents. Staff recommends acceptance, along with our consultant, SEC, with funding from the TML loan. I also mentioned the construction time. We have a letter from Genco Construction which is asking for an additional 754 days in the contract time. SEC, our consultant, has provided a response, which has agreed to a 521-day extension of the contract time, and they list several different items which warrants or merits the extension. The reduction, the amount of additional days recommended from Genco's request is primarily due to a reduction in weather delays, obviously if, which written into our contracts that weather days are not deemed a reason for an extension of the contract, unless there's something significant, which I will mention that we had two significant natural disasters during this time with the Good Friday tornado, and also the ice storm in Bowling Green, Kentucky, impacted a lot of our overhead utility crews and extended the project. SEC has provided, as I mentioned before, that they are in agreement with additional 521 days and the extraordinary conditions outlined in their attached letter, which had not been considered by them while developing the construction schedule, has impacted it, and thus the schedule should be extended. Therefore, SEC does not recommend assessing liquidate damages on this project, and staff concurs with increasing the total contract time from 780 days to 1,301 days. With that, long introduction, I know there's also a lot of information in there, both myself and Mr. Doug Jenkins with SEC is available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Griffith regarding this final change order?
Mr. Griffith, I know there have been weather issues that normally wouldn't have to deal with, and I know this is a project we're in the middle of and need to finish, but I really don't like missing something by a million dollars in a year and a half in time. Is there any way you see around that that could have been prevented? I mean, that's basically what, a 12 percent overall project cost and a year and a half's worth of time that we're talking about?
It was, and of course, looking back on the project schedule, really, and several years ago, the council supported and we undertook going to a milestone approach, and basically where we worked the project in several smaller areas, we found that most of our delays were in milestone one, which was basically getting us through Old Nashville Highway. It was really an intersection of a lot of utilities, both going on Old Nashville Highway and Florence Road, obviously with Old Nashville being a, one of the main connections between Murfreesboro and Nashville for some time. This really impacted the overall schedule, but really, Mr. Gilly, the significance, and I think if you look at the breakdown, came down to CUD's engineer, which is separate, hired by CUD, completely separate from us, but we have to kind of live with their design and their plans, missing really about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars' worth of work that they didn't foresee in the project. Obviously, when you look at something of that magnitude, it affects the unit cost for items, and obviously, it also affects the schedule. Not only our construction schedule, but imagine Middle Tennessee Electric or MED that's not expecting to have to move a series of poles, and now they've been, you know, an entire new set of, or entire section of water line has to be relayed, and we actually went back and looked, and a lot of the, a lot of the stuff on Old Nashville Highway wouldn't have had to been redone or relayed if CUD would have accounted for that in their initial design.
And this is a joint project with the county, the county bearing share of this as well?
Yes, they bear half of the construction cost minus water and sewers. Water and sewer had about 120,000 dollar addition, most of that was just for a line extension to serve some new development that was in the area, but most of it could be back to the water line. And then also, it was about 300,000 on the bituminous index. It caught us really at a bad time, 2006, the oil prices were at least somewhat stable, and the bituminous index jumped all over the place for the last three to four years, which basically it's a, it follows a lot with the diesel prices, and we've seen diesel steadily go up, but not really had much of a drop in it, which really impacted the asphalt prices, which obviously, two and a half miles of roadway, quite a bit of asphalt that was placed on the project.
I guess our position is that the CUD, you caused this expense, and their position is we're fine with our water line where it's at, if you want the road, that's...
It is.
...sum that up pretty well?
Exactly, they have a private easement, they had, they made out good on the overall project, because they had some old asbestos line that had to be replaced, and really it, not much of an upgrade of the system. You'll see that we did note 300,000 dollars in upgrade, where they actually upgraded the 20-inch line to a 30-inch line. We did feel and asked for CUD's consideration in covering some of these additional costs, and their board neglected, their board chose not to, basically that they were in their private easement and that...
If we want the road, then...
I did have that conversation with Mr. McRoy several weeks ago to express to him the frustration about the large change order at the end, so that this can be avoided in the future. You know, this project, I think, also predated our utility coordination meetings, that we now have made a standard practice to try more on the front end, to pre-plan some of this utility work, as we've said several times. We always call them a road project, but what they really are, a utility relocation project. The paving's, you know, something you do at the very end, and this project had a substantial amount of utilities, but to your point, Mr. Gilly, we have sat down with CUD to, you know, make sure this doesn't happen again.
And we've also, the council has authorized us moving forward with, one of the drawbacks of getting some of the utilities to move ahead of schedule was we, we really didn't have some place for them to move, because we hadn't already purchased the right-of-way. The council's authorized on some upcoming projects that we've already purchased the right-of-way, and Rucker Lane, for instance, Rucker Lane improvements. I know that MED currently has that scheduled for next year, whereas the road project may not be for another couple of years, but MED and ATMS and some of the utilities have already got that scheduled to relocate. The council's authorized the purchase of the right-of-way and the easements necessary so they can get in and do their thing before we ever step foot on the job.
Well, I mean no disrespect to CD in my comments either, we've always had a really good working relationship with that utility, just asking the question.
Mr. McFarland?
Looking at the budget, we were, you know, dollar figures, the water line, you know, is 230 percent was the majority, the 1.35 million, and the engineer through CUD, I mean, I guess because it's their water lines, they run their engineering calculations and they tell us exactly, tell us what needs to be done, and so they just missed it by 300 percent, 230 percent?
It is, sir.
Obviously, are they still using that engineer?
They still use the company. Mr. McRoy has told me that the particular engineer that did the design is no longer welcome on his projects. And getting back to what Mr. Gilly said, we do have a great working relationship, and this is nothing on Mr. McRoy, or Mr. Bradley, or anybody at CUD, or their board. This is strictly just an error by their engineer that we happen to be stuck with the bill for.
That's my, I guess my point, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but we have such a good relationship, we're working with Halls Hill Park and Rucker Lane and all these different road widenings and road relocations, but I don't think 230 percent, 1.3 million dollars in overage, that is not a very good tolerance for an engineer to estimate.
And just speaking towards the relationship with CUD, you know, with the Veterans Parkway extension, they've recently completed a project that they had on the books. They probably could have took us some on that as far as our road project, causing them to upgrade the line, but they actually moved forward with their project before we ever got started, and probably saved what they estimated was about a million dollars to the city on that particular one. So it's a give and take, certainly, as we move out, as much as I like Mr. Kirchner and dealing with his department, as we move out into these, further out into the, spread our city limits further out into what used to be the county, we'll encounter these more often, and we're, and we'll continue to, we have a couple of projects with them now, and we're watching those budgets very closely that this doesn't happen.
And if I remember, we had significant delays with some of the telecommunications companies. I remember certain capacity manager even had, we were receiving so many comments that he had posted signs up saying, "Call these individuals."
Yes, I was on the media quite a bit there midway through the project, trying to, and not only with them, but there were also some, really some smaller companies that had attachment agreements with MED and with some of the folks out there, that, you know, when you're dealing with someone with just a small utility company that you don't have a relationship with, it's sometimes hard to convince them that your project is a pro.
Mr. Washington?
Well, I'm just glad it's over. That project drove up for a long time, and, you know, it involved us, you know, my company, Milton Select, that double circuit drove us a wonderful job. But I know where you're coming from, you know I do, Chris, and you got to, you know, you realigned Princeville Road, that was a good move, Princeville Road and Florence Road realigned, got a traffic light at Old and Manson Pike, because of the elevation of, you know, the little hill right there. So it's been a good project.
Well, the city benefited also with the construction of our public works facility, with the drainage in that particular area, with the road improvement, that certainly enhanced our ability to cut all of our yard waste processed and get it in and out and have our trucks there. I mean, it's just a facility you would not have been able to use on the existing road, and it's about a three and a half mile project, and every bit of it was a 90-degree angle every which way you went, and it wasn't anything lined up. The utilities have been there for years, and I understand everyone's concern, and I'm sorry that it's taken, number one, taken so long, and number two, cost so much, but it's over with, I think we can assign blame, and everybody can take their participation, and still say that it's a great project, I'm glad it's over with, too.
Yeah, the fire station knocked in, when I'm not that way, those residents are really using those sidewalks and walking, and it was good, it just took so long.
Neighborhood road as opposed to an unimproved county road, and just a hodgepodge of left, right, left, right, left.
And I believe that Old Nashville Highway, at one point, that Old Nashville Highway and Florence Road intersection was rated one of the worst intersections in the state for accidents, if I remember.
It did have a high accident rate, and as a matter of fact, the intersection at Florence and Manson Pike was also, was on TDOT safety improvement list, so we really improved two, just substandard intersections, and also, as Mayor had mentioned, several, I mean, just curves that obviously did nothing but follow fence lines with the 90-degree turns that had in them.
You have this recommendation of the city engineer, they have questions regarding the final change order. If not, is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
All right, you have a motion in second. Any questions on the motion? Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Beer permit applications, Ms. Wright?
Mayor, we have three tonight. The first one is a restaurant at 2441 Old Ford Parkway Suite M&amp;N. It's not quite finished yet, it is a new location, but they're in the middle of their final inspections, and I was told by building codes, they think they'll probably finish those up tomorrow, so instead of them waiting another week, I'd like permission to issue that once they pass their final codes inspections. I have a special event by the United Way at 1124 Rucker Lane, and I have another restaurant at, it may be a restaurant bar, at 114B South Maple Street, it is also a new location.
All right, any questions regarding these beer permit applications? They all appear to meet the requirements.
Move for approval.
All right, you have a motion in second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You have a list of the payments to be considered for payment. Are there questions regarding any of those bills to be paid? If there are no questions, is there a motion that we do, in fact, pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Beer permit applications, Ms. Wright?
Mayor, we have three tonight. The first one is a restaurant at 2441 Old Ford Parkway Suite M&amp;N. It's not quite finished yet, it is a new location, but they're in the middle of their final inspections, and I was told by building codes, they think they'll probably finish those up tomorrow, so instead of them waiting another week, I'd like permission to issue that once they pass their final codes inspections. I have a special event by the United Way at 1124 Rucker Lane, and I have another restaurant at, it may be a restaurant bar, at 114B South Maple Street, it is also a new location.
All right, any questions regarding these beer permit applications? They all appear to meet the requirements.
Move for approval.
All right, you have a motion in second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. I'd like to point out there will be a community meeting at the Bradable Road Church of Christ, and that will be 5:00 to 7:00 PM, June 15th, the same time as our stormwater meeting up on the north side of town, but our police and city officials will be present to talk